Good evening, who is waiting? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Trustees Workshop. We have a number of items of business tonight. I have no announcements beyond having attended the Putnam County Youth Court graduation ceremony about an hour ago. And there were quite a number of Cold Spring students there. Proud of them. Congratulations to all. Does anyone else have any other announcements? Anything we need to know about pickups or anything, Jeff?
No.
Opportunity to modify agenda. To apologize, we have, there's, there are a lot of things going on this weekend and things that need quick attention. So I would like to, the police officers there. I'd like to make a motion to add two items, three items to the agenda. We'll take them one at a time. First, a docking request from the Sloop Clearwater. Any, may I have a second? Any objections? All in favor? Sorry, did that backwards order. The next is, we apologize, this request did come in on time, but we did not get it. We forgot to put it on the agenda. That is a request for a cleanup at dockside. I would like to make a motion to add that. All in favor? The next, I believe Laura would like to make a modification to item E.
That's right. I'd like to change, sign the letter to an update on the, my sort of grant.
Provide an update on?
Yeah. And not fine.
And then the last add is I would like to enter communications into the public record. All in favor? Okay. And now we got all that all the way.
We need to like
Change to the, I started, did you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Laura's recommendation to modify, thank you, Erin, to modify item six E. Make a motion to modify to an update?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, now with it all out of the way. Every now and then we get to do joyful things. And one of them is tonight. Phillips Town has a, I'm sorry, Cold Spring has a surprising number of very long-lived people. And so tonight, we are honoring Agnes Hopkins. We have a proclamation honoring Agnes on the occasion of her one hundredth birthday. Whereas Ms. Agnes DiCandio, known affectionately as Aggie, is a lifelong resident of the Hudson Valley, was born on April thirteenth, nineteen twenty-four, in Highland, and was raised in Hyde Park. And whereas Aggie married Mr. Charles Hopkins of Nelsonville in nineteen fifty-eight, moved with him to the village of Cold Spring in nineteen sixty, and lived in their home on Parshinett Street for sixty-four years. Aggie still lives there. And whereas Aggie is beloved among her neighbors across generations. And whereas Aggie is a fine daughter of our village and makes Cold Spring proud. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees honors Aggie as she turns one hundred years of age and wishes her the very happiest birthday. In witness whereof, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and the trustees have caused this proclamation to be executed and the seal of the village of Cold Spring affixed on the seventeenth day of April two thousand and twenty-four. Hold it up for the camera and we'll make sure that Aggie gets that at home. And thank you to her, happy birthday. And thank you to the neighbors who brought that to our attention. Item four, update on metered parking. So the program is rolling. We have been careful to say from the beginning that it's a, it's a rollout and they're going to be bumps along the way. We're making our way through them. I do want to start out by saying that now we have to qualify this a lot. There's an important thing to remember about why we're doing parking. And that is that over six days of metering, setting aside fees, the meters and the parking lot brought in about seventy-seven hundred dollars. And that's seventy-seven hundred dollars that we don't have to raise via taxes. And I want to just remind folks that that's why we're doing what we're doing is to try to control costs around visitation and offset the tax burden on our village residents. And not just our village residents, but to say, we help fund the cost of all of the things that our merchants benefit from as well, right? Our, the lights, the snow plowing, the, the public sidewalks, all of those things that we all benefit together. So it's a venture we're making together to benefit from together. So we'll, we'll hope that as we fully roll out, those numbers continue to rise and we're in a, we're in a good position. Tell us what, what we need to know on updates. And then I think Michelle, Michelle, is Miss Mel with us? Yes, she is. Now we have some issues we need to talk about related to meters.
Yes. So this week I'd say went a little bit smoother. There are some issues. One in particular is our Mondays and holiday, holidays following on Mondays, which we didn't really think all the way through. Not only does it complicate street signage, but on the technology end of it, it would require someone to manually change it the week of a holiday and unchange it afterwards. And also there's public communication and confusion that I think it would add.
And I would say it's, it's not about not thinking through. It's that some of these things we could not have known until the technology was in place and we, and we got rolling with the system.
Right. It's, it's kind of, you know, blind sided because we didn't have, we don't know the whole process until we go through it. That's right. So I think I think the board needs to sort of discuss how important those, I think it's like four Mondays of the year are to the parking meters and see if we can consider just taking those off, which would be a fee schedule change. Then I did reach out to Glenn Coe. We discussed last week that we want to put better signage on the street after so much feedback from merchants, people on the street, residents, who feel there needs to be like clear signage as to when the meters are on.
And to be clear, we paused the printing
Yes.
until we determined the Monday situation. So we didn't.
It's not going anywhere, but Glenn Coe is the company that we tend to work with for signage and they always bid the lowest. This job is underneath the peak number that you have to get three bids. Yeah, thank you. But they've ordered the blanks. It would be like a twelve inch by six inch sign. And it'll say, you know, meter parking these days an hour. So once we land, you know, decide what we want to do about the Monday situation. They should have the blanks in on April twenty-second or twenty-fifth-ish in there. And they said it's a one-day turnaround. So they can print them out and get them to us as soon as we've confirmed what we wanted to say.
Now, does that, do the other things you're going to bring up, do they depend upon that decision? Should we address that one first before you?
The other ones don't depend on that at all.
So why don't we take, take that first since that's a, that's a small bit?
Yeah, I mean, I
I'd rather kind of look at all of the issues. I mean.
I just don't want to lose track and get confused in what we have to consider.
This is just talking about Monday?
Yes.
The month, the four, the four holiday Mondays.
Right.
And that seems like something that's discreet and can be addressed. Folks comfortable with that? It's a, there is, there is a budget implication for it, a small budget implication, about a five thousand dollar budget implication. But we, Michelle, you want to speak to how you, how we, how you have thought about balancing that out?
Sure. So actually I went back and it is five holiday Mondays. And they were budgeted, even though some of them fall in the winter, they were budgeted at the higher percentage. So it's closer to eighty-nine hundred. However, when we back out, you know, fees and then we can add five hundred dollars for parking permits because we've actually sold more than I originally budgeted for. Then we can also take out, we had a planner and the realization that the workload of next year, we can push probably the planner off to next budget cycle. That's thirty-five hundred. And then engineering, a lot of the engineering will end up being FEMA or FHWA. And realizing that that twenty percent is going to come at a fun balance. We could drop engineering, you know, twenty-five hundred and then balance that eighty-nine hundred. Simply, I think.
Getting it reimbursed after we pay it out. That, that seems reasonable to me. Board discussion?
Michelle, in terms of the projections, what we've seen the past two weekends, which are obviously not going to give us a clear picture with the rest of the year is going to look like, but since this is kind of the lower, only just starting into the season and still at the low end of the season, are these numbers looking like what our projections were?
To be honest, I, I haven't sat down and thought about it. So I don't want to speak to it without having concrete backup.
I have some information about that. So so we did get meter data for the last two weekends. I'm going to assume that this last Saturday and Sunday was a bit more representative. Both Saturday and Sunday, we, we made about eighteen hundred dollars between the park model and the Kia, almost just for Main Street. The, the maximum we use for the model, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, is eighty spaces times eight hours a day. And then converting it to dollars, you know, four dollars an hour, it's twenty-five hundred sixty per day. And so we're running the last two weekend days at seventy-one percent of that. So, and, and it's, it's just getting started. There, we know that there are warnings issued. So there's people that were parked in there that maybe could have used the meters that they, you know, gotten used to it or known it better, better signage. And Michelle, what was in the budget? You had a certain percentage utilization that you put in there. Do you recall?
Yep. Seventy percent for eight months of the year and thirty-five percent for four months of the year.
Now, was that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or just Saturday and Sunday?
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
So
The one with Saturday and Sunday.
So Saturday and Sunday are fine. However, the last two Fridays have been extremely low. And we only had four hundred and seventy-one dollars of revenue. Probably should talk about cars. It's a little less crude, but you divide by four. And that's eighteen percent utilization. So now I can't remember if it was raining on Friday.
That's what I was trying to think about too.
Yeah, right.
And it was also spring break. So people were traveling and
Still low season.
Still low season. Yeah.
So I mean
Can I jump in here for a second? Before we start talking about projections, I think we need to be, take into consideration the fact that the first Friday, the meters weren't working at full optimization. So there was a lot of people that didn't pay. We're not in high season yet. The figures that we talked about earlier that you mentioned earlier do not include the municipal lots. So do not include the municipal lots. There's a lot of factors. I would be very leery about using this as any kind of projections against what we've, what we've budgeted for at this point. We're only two weeks into it as we hit high season, as people get used to the meters. It should tell a different story. But right now, based on two weeks of data, at the, at the initial rollout with all the, some of the issues we've had, people not being aware of it. I think it's dangerous to kind of look at this as projections and trying to project this out against the whole budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for, for clarifying those thoughts. And I agree completely. This is, it's very early on, but it's the data that we have. So we're talking about the data that we have. I would be, I think we're all cautious about projecting based on it. Thank you.
I, I, I also agree. I just wanted to bring it up in the context of removing Mondays and, and possible other revenue. Because we don't know, but it is possible Fridays are not going to be the same as Saturday and Sunday. So far, they're not looking like they are.
Yeah. I think we, it's too early to call that, given the way visitation patterns go.
The five Mondays are the MLK Memorial, Labor Day, Christmas, and New Years?
No, not Christmas and New Years. Did you get Veterans Day in there? And we got MLK Memorial Day.
Columbus Day.
It's, it's President's Day, Columbus Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Martin Luther King Day.
I was just was trying to think there like, is it, are the shops open on those days? Like they're days off, but and
But I mean, any shop, most shops open on holidays.
Yeah.
Because it's like, it's like an extra weekend.
Something like Christmas and New Years.
You know, so they're like those.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yes.
So although I, revenue in the budget is great, what some, the board may not see is the behind the scenes to administer this Monday. And it's not about not doing the work. It's every time we touch the kiosk, we run the risk of having to make sure it sinks properly. It might not work until we really learn the system. The signage, the extra signage. People are confused as it is. I'd be, even though I would love that nine thousand in the budget, I'm in favor of getting rid of it for the, the trickle-down effect of implementing those five days on what it would be for the staff and the patrons and the signage.
And, and Michelle, I agree completely. And honestly, I must say that the, the, the staff considerations are paramount to me as part of this discussion because I see everybody doing the work all day. And, you know, it took quite a lot from you and Michelle and Jeff working in coordination when we did have, have to make modifications. We'll get better at this, but we're not there yet. And so I, I would support that, the removal of that as revenue. And so that we're conservative. Any opposition to that?
No, I think it makes, I think it makes sense.
Particularly because we are, we are able to balance it with other, make, making other modifications. We're still able to balance.
I mean, I think also we, you know, we're learning about this, the programming of this now in real time while we're using it. So I think we will have a lot better information. Eventually we can look at this again when we've had more time with the, with the system and understanding it better. And and maybe there is some sort of modification that we don't know about that is not so labor intensive for, for staff to have to go to the actual kiosk and change it the Monday before.
Right.
That sort of thing. So I'm in favor.
Okay.
My, um, I'm, I'm in favor conditionally.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to look at the backends. I think Michelle and I have an appointment tomorrow around lunch to look at it. And I think the data is like Jeff points out, a little too premature.
Yes.
I'd like to have a little bit more information. We don't have a Monday holiday coming up, but we do want to print the signs soon. So that really, to me, it's like, can we wait a week? Or should we do it now? Because the signage would be much more helpful.
Well, we would need to, that, a, a modification to the fee schedule is a resolution. So we, we couldn't, we wouldn't be making that decision tonight. We wouldn't be voting on that decision tonight. We would be directing the clerk to prepare a resolution in the case that, that we are in a week from now, ready to vote on it.
Okay.
So if we learned something, we could, we could direct the clerk this evening. And if we learn something spectacular while you're working on the backend with Michelle, you could get to next Wednesday and say, remove it from the agenda.
Right. The plates can't be printed before then anyway. So we have a week to decide.
It's cool. Great.
So they can't, they can't start on the plates until then?
They've ordered them. So it's in the works.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to take that time.
It'll take one day for them to print once we say go.
Okay.
Well, then maybe that's the grace period that we have to, if there's some magic that you think you can do.
It's fine with me. Oh, I don't.
A pleasure.
Yeah. Hey, and you guys vote on the resolution. Go for it. That, that works for me.
So Jeff, we're, we are asking the clerk to prepare a resolution in the case that we should need to vote on one next week, next week.
Yep. Let me also throw in there that if we keep the holiday Mondays, would most likely require staff to do work on a Sunday, which would then be double time.
Yeah, yeah. And, and also you guys need your weekends. No question.
I mean, I think we only, and going back to the original point, then I think we only add the Mondays. If there is a way to do it, that is if there's a technical change, you know, then that's fantastic. If not, then off the table.
Do you need a, do you need a vote to prepare? Or is us sitting here and the five of us asking you sufficient to prepare the resolution?
Is the decision to move forward with the resolution to vote on next week, or is it a decision to remove holiday Mondays?
Decision is to prepare a resolution that would remove holiday Mondays from the fee schedule next week if no solution is found.
Now, no vote is necessary for that.
Thank you. All right. What else you got, Eliza?
All right. The rest, we're still kind of working through on the enforcement on the backend. We're trying to figure out how to make things work between technology or code and like what the court, the way the court operates with like the ticket system in terms of like timing of, you know, you have thirty days to pay or the fee goes up this much. So all of those things are not fitting together, which may, I'm meeting with Michelle and the judge and Kathy, the court clerk next Tuesday. And we'll try and find a solution, but it might require the board to make a code change. Because there's no, if there's no other option. So we're working through that, but this is just kind of a heads up like.
Code change, just altering the language regarding
The like
Late fee.
Right. So when your fee goes up because you didn't pay it last month and you've had thirty days and you missed that, now it's fifty dollars more. And then it goes up another fifty and sixty days. Those things might have to be adjusted ever so slightly language-wise so that they are compatible, compatible with the technology system that pays the prince of tickets.
Okay. And again, this is until, until using it.
We couldn't have guessed. Yeah.
So, but that's on, that's on hold too, because we're, we're problem solving around that to see if we can avoid making the change.
Okay. We'll advise you guys fixing for that. Okay. All I have for the moment, I had mentioned more kiosks, but I think the data shows that the kiosks aren't collecting as much. And we don't really have it budgeted. So maybe we wait a year until we
I think, yeah, I think we have to stick to our plan.
Could be a chicken and egg problem too, right? We're not getting as much kiosk as there are kiosks.
Right. But let us remember that, that the plan we set out to implement was all app-based. And we made a decision to invest in two as a way to improve it. And that's what we could afford to do in the first year was buy two kiosks and give it a year. I'm all, I'm all for having more of them when we can afford them.
Okay. I was surprised at the proportion of, it's, it's like twenty-six percent of the money's coming from the app.
Wait, that was the intention.
And, and we're, we're meeting our, our expectations already.
Yeah.
Second week, so.
Well, and, and not for nothing, people use this technology all over the place. This, the app-based parking. We're not, we're not, it's not unique to Cold Spring.
I already had it downloaded.
Also, you don't have to use it on the app. You can use it on a web browser. I think it's our Atlanta speedster too. So we're not requiring people to
The download.
App store and that.
We have stats on how many people do it through the web.
Amazing. Fantastic.
And iPhones and Androids. So, okay. Another thing I think you did, just to jog your memory, is the forty-five cent fee.
Oh, yeah. That, thank you. So we, the app had been set up so that on days when you didn't have to pay, it would be like, you don't have to pay today. Pay forty-five cents to reserve your free parking. Yeah. And also it said select the village and it was like Cold Springs, New York. So those things have been adjusted and fixed. It's now Village of Cold Spring. And the forty-five cent fee on free days has been removed. So those
And I confirm that. People are reserving for actual free. I don't have to reserve.
You don't have to reserve your spot.
Actually meaning
So during the week, again, just to reiterate, Monday through Thursday, parking on Main Street is free. It's, it is, it is time limited, but it is free. But I also want to say to, to the public, thank you for working on this with us. Thank you for being patient. I would say it would be very helpful if when you find things like that, because that's the forty-five cent charge for something we didn't know until people started using the kiosk. Please give us direct feedback at parking@coldspringny.gov. It's, it's great to spend hours on Facebook debating back and forth, but actually this is where we can solve problems. And at the staff level, so please, parking@coldspringny.gov and, and keep us in the loop with the things you're finding. And, I mean, clearly as we, as you bring things to us, we address them. And that's the whole, that's been the, the project from the beginning. Do you want to talk about now?
Follow your map.
Oh, the map. How did that come about?
You want to talk about? So we
We don't have a chair. I'm
Right. We don't have a copy of it, but we are working on improving the communication tools. We've mentioned adding signage on the streets. But Aaron's been working on a map that has Friday through Sunday parking and then Monday, Monday through Thursday parking, showing all the different zones, time limitations, whether you have to pay or not. On this, we are still working, fine tuning and, and perfecting. But once we have it ready, we'll put it up on the website and distribute it out to the public. So that, that's coming soon. And hopefully that'll help clarify all the questions and confusion that people have.
We do need a lot of colors to describe the parking situation.
True, for a tiny village. Great. This is awesome. And thank you for working together on it. And obviously Michelle and Jeff should have eyes on it too.
Yep. I've gotten some feedback already, which is great. I really have no pride here. Whatever feedback.
I think it's awesome. That's what we needed.
We also want it accurate. Which is hard. Thank you. And I, and hopefully this is good. And, you know, I took some liberties to not really try to show one side of the street versus the other. Instead I say obey local signage. And things like that, because it just gets really complicated. We've tried before. This is, I think, the third or fourth version of the map that we've attempted. And, you know, somebody else can do a better job. And that's fantastic. Not to scale also. That was another
But it's, it's representative of the area. People know it. I mean, the, the, the one thing that strikes me just with a quick look is it is only four spots that are available for the public in Depot Square. And so I don't know, maybe the proportion of yellow could be a little smaller.
Smaller. Maybe it's easier to read if I make it smaller. Show us.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else from any, any other trustees on parking or from the staff on parking? Okay. Okay. So all the things we talked about tonight do have budget implications. And we are Michelle is finalizing the budget after our public hearing and has an update for us.
Okay. So I'm going to, going to make those changes that we talked about with the parking. So take down a little bit of parking revenue, increase permits a little bit, make the changes to engineering, parking meter fees, planning to balance. I also added in an additional cell phone and laptop monthly fee that we didn't have in originally, but that's part of being balanced with the parking. It took care of all that together. So it's balanced again. The other topic to discuss is the fund balance allocation. Right now it's roughly two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The ninety-nine portion is allocated to specific projects or specific items within the budget. The two hundred thousand was for village-wide repairs, FEMA, FHWA drainage, wherever we need as we come through. As we move closer to applying for FHWA for Fair Street, and the numbers come in higher than original with mitigation, that two hundred thousand probably won't cover the twenty percent. So Fair Street, if Fair Street's a million dollars, that's two hundred thousand. It looks like estimates are going to be higher. So I recommend that we increase the fund balance allocation, not taxpayer dollars. Fund balance allocation, which we use for one-time big projects. If we increase it, another hundred and fifty thousand. That would give us roughly three hundred thousand for Fair Street and then fifty thousand for other things that pop up with drainage or small amounts for FEMA. Anybody have thoughts?
I think, I'll go last.
I mean, I think that makes sense. If we don't use it, then it goes back into the fund balance, but it's better to have it budgeted and be prepared for higher costs than, so that we can get the work done.
Correct.
Michelle, like the H and H study for our match, is that coming out of fund balance or is that in an engine?
Like the H and H study for our match, is that coming out of fund balance or is that in an engineering line?
Um, it could be either one depending on the amount of it. Um, do we have an amount for H and H yet, a proposal?
Uh, there would be, we're waiting for the proposal for a small initial study that we wouldn't have a grant, we would just have to pay for or wouldn't have grant for and hoping that something like fifteen.
Yeah, I mean, it came in. The conversations we had with the um. So Han does our regular engineering, Laura identified um another engineering firm that specializes in. Um, climate resilience and also green infrastructure. So, you know, the kinds of stuff we need to be moving toward. Um, and their initial estimate for a full H and H study. Was almost two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we asked them. It was more than that, okay. Um, it included however, um. Public interface a- and organizational interface, so uh. Pulling together parks, pulling together Nelsonville, pulling together Phillips Town on this combined project. We've done a lot of that. Um, so we went back and said, look, we don't have this money. What we need is something baseline that we can use when applying for other grants. So that we can get the bigger grants to do the, the larger study that's needed. So we met with them, can't remember if it was at the end of last week. Um, and talked through possibilities and it seemed as if they could scale something for us that would give us a work product around fifteen.
Uh, there were two, they proposed two steps. One was kind of a um, a tabletop study that they initially proposed for three hundred and then uh, thirty thousand and then. That the full study, including the, the waterfront area, personally like three hundred.
Yeah.
And we have asked them to significantly reduce. To what I'm hoping is something like fifteen thousand and maybe a hundred thousand where the majority of that hundred thousand is covered by grants. So we are really trying to reduce and they seem willing to work with us. Um, it, the, it, just to say the hundred thousand, if we get a grant for that, we would be covering something like. Thirty, given the um, the match, the required match.
We also did have, just sorry, one more quick, and we also did meet with um. Hudson Belli Estorres affiliated the DEC. Um, and with, we had an interview with FEMA's BRIC program. For technical assistance grants. Um, we had, we were received well and encouraged to continue the process with them. That could also, that technical, that lean in on technical assistance could bring down the cost for us as well. What were you gonna ask, sorry?
I'm drawing a blank on H and H.
Oh, hyd- hydro, hydro, hydrologic and. I can never say that either.
Essentially, they're gonna create like a system map of, of our watershed, of our stormwater system. And then they're gonna model it all and then they're gonna, and then they're gonna look at. If you plug in different solutions, how much of the flooding does it call?
Great.
So that we can figure out, instead of just being like, oh, let's try this, there's something in like one spot here. We can actually figure out with like a systematic approach.
Um, it. It's what we, it's what we really need, because what we're finding is that when we do intervene, there's, there, there is inevitably. Uh, there, there is another place that becomes a problem because the water's moved. So we have to make sure we're looking at it holistically. So Michelle, that was a long answer to your question to say. If, go ahead.
I would say my hope is that it's something like maybe five thousand this budget cycle and something like forty thousand next budget cycle.
We did talk with them, Michelle, about. Product delivery in this budget cycle, um, to get it, like the right number before we get to June first. So that we can knock some of it out this budget cycle.
This is fund balance, right? Money? So, it's.
It doesn't make that much, but it, but it does in turn, it, it's the same pot of money, if that's what.
Also means we can get started. Yeah, exactly. We're going up against summer grant deadlines.
I just think possibly it's better to overshoot than to underestimate, right? If we don't know how much it is. Um, because the money can be returned, but if we need more money from the fund balance, that gets a bit tricky, doesn't it?
So you would advocate going, even pulling even more down?
I, I haven't gone through this before, but just, you know, considering that view of the rules, it would. It would seem better. We still tried to negotiate, you know, as low as possible. It's not like we'd spend more, but. Something like this, it can be an easily unanticipated cost, so.
And we don't, we don't have the option to not do it either.
What was the original number, Michelle, that you suggested? Three hundred?
So I have a, I have a question. Um, if I can, if we could walk through timeline real quick. The technical, I thought that the technical assistance grant would come first and that they would help us prepare to apply for grants for a full H and H study. So timeline wise, would the H and H study really happen in twenty-four, twenty-five?
We don't know that we're going to get the technical assistance grant, so we are, we are sort of dual tracking. With FEMA and, and the engineer and other grant sources, because we don't know if any single one of them. Is going, what, what's going to come through and what isn't. So we're kind of hedging bets at this point by applying to multiple programs. Um, and hoping that we get the technical assistance, but if we don't, we're gonna need to pay for some of it.
I also, even if it's, it's a new FEMA program and it's not, I think even clear to FEMA what they can provide from what they told us and. I, they, they tended, they seem to be saying, don't expect that much from this. So I think it may be that they can do some pieces.
Yeah.
And that would reduce the um scope of work for um, for a contract that we would. Do with other engineers, but that they wouldn't be able to.
Do all of it.
Do the complete, do the complete study. Um, but Michelle, for timeline, we would do a, this kind of tabletop. Understand existing conditions and existing data over the next couple of months, so that we could apply in July. For um funding, state funding. I don't know when you find out about that sometime in the fall. And then do the H and H study and I would say hope to complete it. We don't actually know how long it takes them to complete it, but ideally they would complete it so that then we could apply the next summer, this budget cycle, so we could apply next summer for other grants. Yes, construction. That would be, so, so I think we're, we're hoping to complete this planning. This, but this coming budget cycle. Does that make sense?
Okay, so then. The estimate for FHWA is three hundred, the estimate for this is forty. And then we need some money for, there's gonna be some other kind of project that pops up. You know, so does the fund balance allocation really become four ninety-nine? Um, you know, that's, it's half a million. Um, that's a big chunk of the fund balance. Um. If, if the board moves forward with doing this. The, once we get past a couple of these minor code changes and stuff, we're gonna have to really capital plan and plan on borrowing in the future.
For sure.
And work on that.
Well, I mean, part of where we've been is just getting numbers to apply, to, 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 to know what the scope of costs are going to be. I mean. The FEMA process has helped us put numbers on things that we didn't have numbers on before. There's still some numbers that we. Need to know, right? We know we, we, the dam numbers, we know. Fair Street, we know. We have estimates for Fish Street, we have estimates for Fish, Gill and Mountain. We have estimates for. What am I missing? Uh. Oh, the tunnel is still undetermined whether it's us or MTA. So, there's, there's, that, that is sort of immediate repair, not immediate, but, but uh, shorter term. Repair, but the larger, what comes out of the H and H study and what it costs to fix, what's identified in the H and H study is, that's for sure. Long-term capital plan, planning, for sure.
Okay.
Michelle, how did you go from three forty to four ninety-nine?
Yes.
Well, the budget right now is two ninety-nine. We need to add a hundred for FHWA, so that's three ninety-nine. And then if we do forty for the H and H. Um, that's four forty-nine. Uh, and then if we wanted to have some money for. Larger catch basin, base failure or. Um, we might need some more money for village hall repairs, depending on how those go with the DASNY grant. Um, that's why I was rounding up.
Yeah.
To five hundred.
I mean, I, I, I think it's, as Aaron pointed out, it's probably smarter to do it front end. So forget how we're gonna pay for it mid-year. Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, the thing is too, you know, like we've been sitting, the, the village, us. Have been sitting our learning for quite some time and. Now we're at a point where these things are, the list of things to do is just, well.
The fund balance got built. After two thousand seventeen. There were negative years before that. The fund balance has been building since two thousand seventeen. Um, some things were fixed, lots of things weren't.
Right, I mean, that's.
And so now, we've, we've, we have, thankfully, we have money to fix the things, but we have to actually do the work.
Yeah.
Um, and we are gonna have to. Once we have a better sense of what the grants are looking like, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to bond some things. And that, that's gonna require, I think it's gonna require um. Advising at the local level and also we need, will need to work with munistat.
Yep, I mean, the reason the, the fund balances as of. A year ago were two point seven million across the three funds, right? Um, but I think as you've sort of implied, it's. It's, we're not necessarily saving for a rainy day. Some of it was, a lot of it was projects that were never executed, right? So it's, and so this is the result, right? And um, yeah, and then you're, the list that you just made is long enough, yes.
Yeah, that's just.
Definitely gonna have to borrow from the future to, to start some of this, because if we delay, it's just gonna get bigger and worse.
That's, Aaron, just correct. The fund balance last year wasn't two point seven million, the budget was two point seven million. Fund balance was, Michelle, I think it was like one point six or something around that.
And also the water and sewer general, uh, jump. Fund balances are distinct from general fund, fund balance.
I was adding up the fund balances.
Well, water and sewer items are funded, budgeted separately under general municipal law.
Yeah.
So the one that, when we're talking about roadways and facilities and stormwater and that's the thing we're talking about. General fund. If we're talking about dam repairs, that's water fund. If we're talking about. Treatment plant, that's the sewer fund.
And can we transfer money between the funds?
Michelle?
And there can be, there are small transfers, you know, for the allocation of shared services um built into the budgets. You know, they're like eighteen thousand from water and sewer to the general fund. However, no fund balance like that. Um, water has to pay for water projects, sewer has to pay for sewer projects. This is a. Like general municipal finance law um that money collected for water and sewer. Um, rents have to be used for water and sewer improvements or to sustain the operations of the plant.
Okay, thank you. Learning more.
What else do we need to hit on budget tonight?
Um, that's all I have um for the budget.
Michelle, thank you so much. And when will the, um, a question for you both is when will, the, the. Vote is scheduled on the twenty, the public hearing is scheduled on the twenty-fourth, right?
No, we had the, the resolution and we have to adopt the budget a week from tonight.
Adoption is.
Is what it's. Twenty-fourth is what we've scheduled.
So when, so the, the final modifications. We may have, sounds like we may have one more round? Or there's the possibility of one more round of discussion next week? But the.
I wasn't, I don't think so, um, unless I missed something that we didn't decide tonight.
All the things, I mean, you, you hit the, you hit the, um. The technology request as well. So, so when will, what I'm, what I'm driving at is when will the final. Um, proposal be ready for the public to review and for us to review before vote? I think, public hearing, I just mean when will it be on the website?
When we adopt that, yeah.
So, well, if there won't be a, a draft again, it will just be what goes out with, with our backup information for our meeting on the twenty-fourth, uh, so five days before. Correct?
Yes, I have it done. I had to make adjustments to make sure that I can balance it with proposals and it sounds like we agreed on the proposals. Um, so I just have to double check it and I can have it ready by Friday afternoon, Monday the latest and it'll, you know, go up on the website with everything else. In preparation of the meeting.
This was mentioned before, no additional meters, right?
No. Okay. Um, so we're good to go on to the rest of our business. Um, we have, yes, thank you very much. We have um. The Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals with us here, Eric Worth is here tonight. The. This has needed to happen for so long that the application for the zoning board be updated, not just because of code changes, but just for usability. Um, and I first want to commend you for making it so much more approachable for members of the public. Um, is there anything that you want to highlight with us about the document? I think it's fantastic.
Uh, yeah, I would point out that we added some explanations of.
Yeah.
Key concepts, starting with what as, as ZDA is, what its purpose is. With orient, orient, um. Uh, laypeople. There's also an explanation of the difference between a variance and an interpretation.
That's great.
The two main um. A- activities of the ZDA. And um, and then the form is um a PDF that can be filled out on screen. It's got blanks that are um, can be typed into. As, as well as it can also be printed and filled out by hand.
I like that part very much.
One of these days we'll get to some of these things electronically.
Probably the last point I would mention, the zoning performance worksheet, which is page seven. That's the most radically changed element. Um, previously there was a fairly elaborate table that was confusing and with multiple sections. Uh, we've tried to simplify as kind of condense it and um. We'll see how well this works in practice, but this hopefully it will be um more intuitive and, and more concise. For users.
It is, um, also makes what you're solving for, what the request you're making so much clearer. Um, as, as an applicant is formulating it, it's so much easier to understand. Any comments or questions from board members? I mean, and as one would expect, it is meticulously edited.
Yeah, I, I love all the, you know, sort of. Helpful explanations of the process. Um, and I, I think this is such a huge improvement from where it was, like, you know. We, so often that um. These processes are kind of dense and confusing to the layperson who isn't used to doing it every week and it's like. He mystifies and explains every step and holds their hand through it and I think that's exactly what we need. So.
Others? Okay, Jeff, oh, go ahead.
That's the question. Um, uh, it's great, very cool view. Um. You know, like I should know this, but I don't. Um, establish an escrow account. We don't, I don't remember that happening before, but it looked like it was village code with that. Part of the new code update.
No, it's always been there. It's, happens, the, the CBA members don't see it happening.
But it happens, that's been.
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, so that, um, we actually, it's, it's chapter fifty-seven in the village, a separate chapter. So, so that then if the board. Eric and his team needed to consult with the village engineer or the, the village attorney, they've got a pool to come from. And what that, when that was introduced. It wasn't so long ago. Prior to that, you know. Every taxpayer, everyone was paying for the cost of an application, instead of the application being borne by the person seeking the relief.
Yeah.
And so now that is changed, now that is appropriately shifted to the applicant.
Yeah. Um. The only one that sticks out to me is the grounds on which the variance should be granted. I wonder if an applicant knows what, uh, like, I just feel like they, they might like. Throw everything in there of all kinds of reasons, maybe giving a little bit of guidance.
Throw everything in there of all kinds of reasons, maybe giving a little bit of guidance about. Um, maybe even the, the balancing. Um, those kind of, the balancing test, giving a, a reference to those, that they should justify it in terms of those five. Principles or some, otherwise, I think, um, they may give you all kinds of things. To make their case.
Grounds is a kind of, um. Unfamiliar term. I, it's really just. Um, it could be explained better to help, I mean, the whole point, the key, the core is. Uh, this is an exception, what are your reasons for needing an exception?
Yeah.
Rather than. Established requirements are. Okay, I, yeah, I could, um. Come up with something that's a little clearer there. I do point them in on page one to the booklet published by New York State that.
A short booklet.
It's like a pamphlet, and it does explain this type of thing.
The guidelines for applicants?
Exactly, yeah.
And that'll be a live link on the site?
Yes, it's on the, um, form itself, it's, it's a quick little link.
Great. Yeah, that's a really good point, Liza, see, that's the value of having trustees come up through the, come up through the board, so you bring knowledge with you to the table. Oh, what did I say? Liza, I meant Laura, sorry. You did a great job pinning up to the zoning board.
Well, that would definitely. Make that a little more kind of intuitive, the language there.
Awesome.
And you'll also see how people use it. You know, you'll get, yeah, but I think this is super.
Thank you, um.
Right, what's the, is there approval process for this, or?
They would make a, um, a motion to, uh, accept the. Um, modified application. With, with the modifications recommended by trustee Bozzi this evening. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, please thank your colleagues immensely.
On you.
Yeah, we got, we've been thought.
Okay, uh, the other items should be fairly quick. Request to set up on village property to sell raffle tickets, so, uh. This is a, a not-for-profit led by, um. She's a Phillips Town, um, resident Dana Rezzi, she wants to set up a two-foot wide table. Along the fence, next to the coffee shop in front of the, um. The parking lot that's there, it is, that is village property, but she did, um, talk with the coffee shop owner to see if he had any objections, he does not. Um, or a table four foot long. By two feet wide to display photos of the raffle prizes, a box for tickets, and a standing poster with information about crate escape, which is a dog. Rescue, for dog fostering, um, organization. It's also asking to hang the banner on the fence.
No, I think it's great.
Make a motion?
There are no restrictions about. Raffles on village property. Nothing of that.
She does, oh.
Oh, Jeff is gone. They, they do it at the, um. Our annual.
Media?
Thank you, that's what I was looking for. They, they've already done it.
Okay, can we just make a motion?
I make a motion to, um. I guess, what, what am I making a motion for, for them to, to approve crate escape rescue selling raffles, holding a fundraiser?
Date is important, she is asking for any of the following dates, May eleventh, May twenty fifth, May twenty sixth, or June second.
Oh, I thought it was June.
April.
Oh, okay, so, uh. Do we want to choose a date?
Yes, she, so she is holding a fundraiser that will include raffles, will be pre-selling raffle tickets for several of these items. Where the winner would not need to be present at the event to win.
Okay.
So she's pre-selling. Um, Memorial Day is not gonna be the great, a great weekend, twenty fifth, twenty sixth is Memorial Day, right?
Yeah.
So. So the eleventh and the second, I don't. See any reason not to do those, I'm gonna double check the calendar and make sure there's anything else.
So, second is a Sunday? I don't know.
You're out of the calendar.
May, eleventh is a Saturday.
Second is not very good.
Yeah, Sundays tend to be slower than Saturdays, so I might. Recommend we approve that one.
Can we approve both days and then just as long as one of those days and not to both, and then my man one day or some things?
And I, I want to make clear, because we have had requests for. Um, tables in front of merchants before, I want to be clear in the record about why this is different. Um, why it stinks, because that area is set back from the sidewalk, it's not on the sidewalk. Um, it's in a tree lawn area, um, and, and back from. The walking area of the, of the sidewalk.
Are you seeing requests from merchants or requests from other people?
Why is this, why have we said, some things we have said no to in the past, but last year the cheese, the, the cheese shop asked to set up a table. In front of, in front of their business to sell sandwiches out, and we declined because of the. Yep. Restriction, and interestingly, just as a bit of background, while researching another topic. Um, I found the origin of the three feet from the building in the code. And it was. An argument between, um. A long ago mayor and the Merchants Association. They put tables up, he had them pulled. They wanted four feet, the village wanted two feet. They compromised it three, so that is why our code is thirty-six inches from the building.
There's a reason.
But there's a reason.
Right.
Um. Um, so in the past, we have said no, for example, that event at the cheese shop, because they asked for a busy Saturday. Coming out to that three feet, and then we were thinking about people standing in line beyond, in this case, it's off. The sidewalk itself, um, and it's a narrow table, so I feel, because of that, I feel comfortable, I want to make sure nobody else has a concern about that. Okay, okay.
Thank you for that recommendation. Okay. So that. And we, and we're.
May eleventh and June second.
Okay. I make a.
One of, one of the two, that she choose one of the two.
Yeah, okay, I will make a motion then, um, to approve the Creighton. Escape rescue raffle. With the following dates of May eleventh and June second.
May or.
May.
May.
Eight or.
Second at the discretion of the applicant.
There you go.
That, that is your motion?
That is my motion.
Again? Okay, all in favor, I, sorry, I'm trying, you for a second.
Get all the candy?
You got it, amazing, okay, next, I have talked to Bugsy about this, um, this is a new property owner at twenty-two Parsonage Street. The sidewalk, I don't know what happened when that sidewalk was poured, it's an old sidewalk, but it, um. It has a very ragged edge into the yard. Beyond the boundary of the rest of the sidewalk around it, so he is asked to trim back. The sidewalk so that it's a clean line, and he has more, um, planting area in the front yard, Bugsy is fine with this, he's talked to the property owner, the property owner has the skillset to do that, a straight cut. Um, and he's okay with it. Um, and I think it's, um, it's great for him to be helping improve the sidewalk and the discussion.
Bugsy also said he would go and like, check it.
Yes, he would go and check it out.
Sure, get it done properly as well.
You. Um, any other discussion? Um, I would make a motion to approve, um, Patrick DePonte, DePonte's request to. Um, clean up the sidewalk, make up a tidy removal of the sidewalk at twenty-two Parsonage Street. All in favor? Hi, thank you, Patrick. Okay, update on proposed food scraps program, go.
All right, um, so. Uh. I met with, I, uh, during department heads meeting last week or something like that, um, and talked through. Um, our pilot program, and so got some good guidance, want to share it and hope that you can kind of get some approval and move this forward. So, again, we, um, built some, already have a program, um, that a lot of residents use, um, bringing their food scraps up to lane gate. On, mostly on Saturdays, strap off and then it gets brought, I think, to the industrial district, turned into compost. Um, and we using our Nicetare Grant are chipping in, um, to add another site, um, here in Cold Springs, and it get more convenient. Um, to do that, we have to do a couple of things. Um, one is, uh, identify a location, that's kind of the challenging part, that's what we talked through at department heads and landed on. Um, Kemble Ave, like. Along the Marathon property at the end of the winter parking area, there's kind of a. Um, a cutout of, um, where the, the, where the parking is, the, the.
Reciced.
It's recessed, the sense of recess, so at the end of that. Um, so, uh, the bins. So the upside of this is that, kind of out of the way. It's, um. Uh, but it's still, it's publicly accessible, um.
And the truck can get down there.
The truck can get there, it's not in the way of snow removal and kind of name, name issue that has come up of that other site. So, um, and Bugsy and others were fine with it, so. Um, and, and the, the other thing is, this is a trial, we'll give it a shot, it's not a permanent decision.
And what is the bin?
It, so it's two, we are, um, planning to get, it's like our Royal bins, two garbage bins.
The big ones.
The, the big.
The biggest.
The biggest ones, the one that most people have in their houses, sort of ninety-six gallons, yeah, so two of those. Um. And, uh, and I found a, a more inexpensive, um, container that it would be housed in. And so it won't look, it will look very nondescript. Um.
Is there gonna be signage so people understand it's not like for general?
Dog poop.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Compostable.
So.
Oh.
It is. But I can't go with food scraps, um, so we, yeah, so we, we will put up signage, but the other thing that we talked about is that, um, the bin is lockable. Um, and so, one. One option is that. We, um, have a, have a code, I think this was Jeff's suggestion, um, Michelle.
A PIN code.
Have a, like a. Yeah, like a PIN code on the lock, and so then if you're a member, then you know the combo and you unlock it, and you use it. Another option is, we get someone to volunteer, one of, someone who does the program. On, I think it's on Wednesday, so on like Tuesday night, they open it up, and it's open for like the twenty-four hours, and then we lock it up again for the whole week. Um, Beacon has the program and they just, and they don't lock it at all, and they haven't had, they did a lot of public education in front of their program and they have the signage. Um, so I think we can try a few different things, but I like the idea that we can lock it.
And the bins wildlife proof, there's a lot of wildlife right there.
Yeah, in the, um.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, so that's the other reason. I didn't, um. Show them the, the, the container, um. I found that this is just a lot cheaper than the wood one that I found initially, it's four hundred dollars, and it's plastic, but it shuts pretty. It looks like a shut swell. Um, and, but you can lift up the top. You could open it, but, and then the hauler will be able to open it up, it has a bottom.
Like a standard garbage can enclosure that a residence would use.
Yeah, so it looks, it looks to me like it's. Um, animal proof. Um, so. Uh, and it's not a huge investment.
It has a bottom, right?
Has a bottom, yeah. Um, the other, um, so, that's, I'll just give you the whole picture. Um. So it's that location I'm proposing, and proposing we spend, we, I can't use a grant to purchase this, so this will come from. Fund balance this. This budget year to get this started.
So the amount we have already allocated for Patrick's, yeah, for not taking a new, not doing a new drawdown.
Um, and, uh. You, we planned out of the grant for two hundred dollars a month is the, is the optimal, if we, if, if we add fifty dollars more. Then the hauler replaces the liners. It's like a trash can liner, which reduces the grossness of it. And also doesn't mean that any of our staff or, and our residents are doing that, so we pay fifty dollars, we get the liners, we get them to replace them weekly, and it's just kind of, hopefully minimize the effort of it. Michelle requested that instead of a nine-month trial, it would be a seven-month trial. Given the cost, it will be sold the same amount. I, I think if disposed well, then we'll be in the situation where we need to come up with. The funding to continue it, um, but, you know, I.
I think it's worth it for a trial, for sure.
Uh, and that, so, so my, my, you know, kind of checking in, how does it sound to everybody? Um. And, and then, you know, are we? Okay with the location, the bin, and reduce seven months, so that we can do the liners.
Um, I would say too that Bugsy suggested this location because. We had originally thought about Fair Street, by the Way Spotter Treatment Plant, but on the weekends, it's packed, and it would just be, our fear is that it would just be a garbage receptacle. So getting it to a still traveled by visitors, but less so tucked away spot with a padlock, we hope would. Um, prevent that.
I think. Good thinking, and I support all of these ideas.
The one thing I'll say is that I, this has not been floated to the hauler. He may, I hope he doesn't, but he could have some other reason why a location, like, there may be considerations that he has that I don't know about, so it will just.
Like getting back there to.
But I thought about like, yeah, I mean, I mean, so, you know.
Royal those. Royal, the Royal back truck.
They must turn around somehow, but as long as.
There's a house all the way further on, on Kemble, on the upslope side. Where our trash, our garbage truck fit and the Royal truck fits, and they turn around at the end of Kemble, come back. So it can, it can be done with a big truck.
In the park, they turn around?
Turn around in that, in that part, right before, the wide area before the parking area. Cool? All right.
Yeah.
So, so I'll roll with it, and then we'll, once we have it set, then, you know, we can make an announcement to everyone, oh, and the other thing that's nice is that. To enroll, I don't know if anyone has done it, hasn't yet, but great, so you know, you probably enrolled. You enrolled with the town and they gave you a pocket and you, the town will still do, yeah, the town will still do all of that, so we don't have to. Process any of it, we're not creating our own program, or just, yeah, and then, and I'll work with Michelle to figure out how we. Kind of reimburse Phillips Town for paying, that's, it's on their contract, we're just. Contributing to it. Um, and town, and village and town residents can use whole sets, we're not chucking. Addresses up the door.
The cost, well, I think it's great, because now it's closer.
I think a lot of people will, yeah, I think a lot of people will appreciate that.
Although that gets pretty heavy.
It does get pretty heavy, but if you were really dedicated tweets.
Totally.
A bike, a bike with a, bike with a car, with a car. Okay, great, well, let us know, and you also are gonna update us on the Nicetare Grant.
Yeah, unfortunately, so we had a, you know, we discussed how to use the seventy-five hundred dollar grant, and I started doing the paperwork for it, and then found out that they made a change to the requirements, so. You have to do an energy audit, like this energy study, which is what we did for Village Hall, in order to use any of the money to do. Any energy efficiency upgrades in a building.
Wait, say that again?
You have to first get an energy audit of a building.
Didn't we just do that?
Who was the guy that came here? Yes, so we did that for Village Hall, but we, but we were going to do LED lights at the sewer plant, and we haven't done an energy audit there. So, we did the water plant without an energy study and it was fine, but they changed the rules, and I didn't realize that. So, um, I know. Um, so, and it costs thirty-five hundred dollars to do the energy study, it feels really silly, but.
Where does that money go? Like, who does the study?
Um, it's a, they contacted the company. Um, and I don't think it's gonna be that useful for the sewer plant, because the big bills are from the, the system. And he's just gonna look at it, like, I don't know if he's gonna tell us anything we don't know about how to make it more energy.
Well, and you don't want to make a water tube implant, air tight.
Yeah, yeah, or like, I mean, so we could, if there were upgrades that we could do to the system to make it more energy efficient, to the actual like churning.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big, you're a very.
But I don't, but I don't know if that will happen, anyway, so, um. So what I. The takeaway is, I, I would like to hold, and we'll probably submit our applications for both the hundred thousand and the seventy-five hundred at the same time, once I have a plan.
It's like one side at a time? Like you couldn't do in any energy audit of, say, like, a couple?
We could, but it's thirty-five hundred dollars for each, each one, so like the town of Phillips Town is doing three buildings. So that then they can do upgrades.
Yeah.
Um, so it might be that we still think that that's the best way to go, um, or we might. Find something else, a higher priority, it, at the sewer plant, it was good because we have after lighting that we needed to get fixed, and so we had a real reason. To get it done.
Yeah, it was the ti, it's the time to, to upgrade.
Yeah.
You had a thought, did you have a thought?
No.
No.
Not a good one.
The, the other one is that if it's a. If it's a five thousand dollar grant, I think we could do it, but I don't have any five thousand dollar grant, there's like different levels of grants, they have different roles for.
Can do half the lighting? Twice?
No.
That wasn't a better idea. Uh, no. Um. So. So that's all to say.
We're gonna come back to us with more.
More to come, um, and, and we had also figured out a good plan with Bugsy about, um, his electric landscaping, so we'll definitely still do that. Um, it just will come a little bit later, we'll do more, yeah. To be continued.
Thanks for keeping.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry for the.
Numbing.
Amazing.
Okay.
Um, next item is a, a very old bit of business, the officer who has submitted his resignation has been on long-term disability for quite some time, he is finally resigning. So I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Officer George Kane. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Next item. With clear water. So. They, um. Without going into too much detail, they had docking arrangements for one of their education programs at another location. That was withdrawn. The permission was withdrawn related to insurance. That they could not, they could not meet the requirement that the other location had. They have asked if they can come to Cold Spring on May third, um, arrive on that day and leave either the same day or in the morning of the fourth. Um. But we'll just be pulling in, tying up and staying potentially overnight and leaving early in the morning. I did have a conversation with the president of. Um. Clearwater, uh, and I'm going, I'm going to meet with him to say. Um, this is an unusual circumstance, but let's get together and talk about process because there is sort of a. Becoming a slippery slope about how close they are requesting docking and we need to know ahead of time. Um, so we could, when we get into season, when there are other requests, we can plan. Um. So I am gonna meet with him, but for for now, I would like to be able to accommodate them. Um, on this education program, so these four hundred kids can do, that's over a course of the course of the week, not four hundred at once. So that the kids who are signed up for the program um are able to 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 carry on and do the program. Any discussion?
It's a Friday to a Saturday.
It's a Friday to a Saturday. And obviously we don't have. Third. Into May fourth. Um, any concerns?
I think it's okay. I I think the Clearwater is always really. People love to see it. It's a kids' education program. Uh, I support it even if I didn't quite follow. The timeline.
Yeah, okay. And Erin, just for your um, for your information, we normally um for not for profits waive the docking fee.
I'm aware.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for docking on May third and fourth from Clearwater for their program.
Second, all in favor? Okay, next is a collaboration. Between Riverkeeper, the river people organize the a river sweep up and down the Hudson River. With um different public locations, volunteer gathering at different locations and cleaning up for spring. Um, the Hudson Highlands Fur Trail uh would like to do dockside as they did last year. Um, I think it's actually the same weekend, May fourth. Yeah, so the Saturday after the Clearwater is here. Um. They would like to bring. Yeah, they're leaving in the, they're leaving in the morning. Um, and they're, they're at our dock. Our municipal dock, the volunteers would be at dockside. Um, have had a conversation with Bugsy and with um Evan Thompson. The director of the park, he's uh, he is supportive of it. We're, we are happy to have the help, that is for certain. Um. The, the two of them are gonna, gonna plan together ahead of time for where, how things get. Um. Sorted on the site. Um, we don't have garbage pickup anymore, so I have asked them to get. Um, a dumpster to have on site and then they haul up, have it haul the way after. Pulled a lot of, they pulled a lot of crap last year, although we've just done a recent cleanup. I don't know if they'll get as much, but I'm delighted that that they're gonna do it again. Discussion.
No, I think it's great that anybody volunteers to do cleanups of the river and it's always much needed because there's always new things washing out.
Yep. They'd appreciate new volunteers, especially since there's so many people who are concerned about that.
That's what I'm hoping.
Maybe this is a good opportunity, but I'm.
Indeed. So, um, that's how it works. The village runs on volunteerism. If you care about dockside, please join May fourth. Um, with HHFT at the Riverkeeper Cleanup. I would make a motion to approve. All in favor? Okay. Last items, uh, two things to enter into public record. Um, one of them I neglected to bring to the table with me last week, so this is old news, but I do want it read. Um, into the record and so that it's part of the village's public record. This is the statement by the Visitation Data Committee members regarding Fuhrer Trail visitation projections. The undersigned members of the Hudson Highlands Fuhrer Trail Visitation Data Committee from Cold Spring, Nelsonville and Phillips Town. Released the following statement in response to information presented on April third, twenty twenty four at Duchess Manor regarding visitation projections for the Fuhrer Trail. The Visitation Data Committee was announced by HHFT on June twelfth, twenty twenty three. With a stated goal to quote, "help review the ongoing traffic study." Pedestrian counts and visitation projecting for the project unquote. This committee has dutifully spent the last eight months reviewing these studies and projections. At this time, we feel it is important to inform the public of significant concerns we have about one of the reports that HHFT is developing. For the draft General Environmental Impact Statement submission. On March twentieth, twenty twenty four, the committee met with HHFT's consultants, Orca and AKRF. To discuss a visitation projection report, which is available on the HHFT website. And their response to our prepared questions. We found the report to have several concerning elements which have not been addressed. One, the selection and compatibility of parks used to project visitation was not adequately justified in key characteristics. Of our areas such as access by train and close proximity to large cities do not appear to have been closely considered in choosing comparable parks. Moreover, the HHFT study has chosen a composite comparable visitor growth rate of only four point two percent based on those parks. To actual data from New York State's Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation does not appear to have been used in the visitation estimates. For the project area. Currently available attendance for the Hudson Highlands State Park. From OPRHP shows a ten point seven percent average annual growth rate in visitation from two thousand sixteen to twenty twenty three. The Orca report shows the same park with only a seven point six annual growth rate for the same period. Data from surveys of potential visitors were not tested for selection bias or statistical significance. One survey based estimate presents a ten percent increase in potential new users under fifty five years of age. This does not seem to take into account new categories of users such as families and cyclists. In addition to those who currently hike the more challenging mountain trails. The impact of marketing and social media was also not included in production projections. We were equally troubled that the report they shared with us was not the full report and it did not contain the full data set citations to sources. Or of the underlying calculations performed. As of this date, which was. Uh, written April third, as of this date, the additional data requested by the committee has not been provided. Um, I understand that some more has been forthcoming since then. Um, but it's uh, but still not all. We have also had material concerns about, one, the adequacy of the data collected by Orca and AKRF. The study pedestrian visitations to the village of Cold Spring and the border area and two. The methodology and coding of HHFT's alternatives analysis, which omitted less dramatic options and included elements that favored HHFT's preferred route. From Dockside Park over alternative studied. Specific committee questions submitted in mid-March about the possible presence of submerged aquatic vegetation within the preferred routes alignment. And the lack of that. Submerged aquatic vegetation's presence in the AKRF alternatives matrix have also gone unanswered. We feel it is necessary to share this information with the public, as was the committee's charge. Because the information that is being portrayed in public meetings has not been adequately examined. And does not take into account the informed recommendations of committee members from the communities most impacted by visitation to this trail. We hope that HHFT will revise their research. And analyses consistent with the committee's feedback in order to make the estimated projections more reliable. Until then, the public should not assume that the Visitation Data Committee is satisfied. With the information and analyses presented. Signed, Chris Winward, Mayor of Nelsonville and Visitation Data Committee Member. Phil Kotnek, Phillips Town Visitation um Data Committee Member. Jeff Robbins, also Phillips Town, Henry Feldman, Village of Cold Spring. Um, Committee Member and James LeBate, Cold Spring Committee Member. Um, I wanted to read that into the record and I wanted to acknowledge the volunteers who are working for on our behalf um and providing us feedback. On what they're seeing. Um, you know, they've taken some, they've taken some slams over the last couple of weeks. Um, and I will say that none of the folks representing Phillips Town, Nelsonville and Cold Spring are are schleps by any means. We, we picked people who who know their fields and bring expertise ranging from data analysis to. Public administration to to legal perspective, so um, I am thankful for their work and I wanted that to be part of our record. Okay. And the last bit that you'll need to listen to my voice for, um, I want to inform the board that, um. Um. Supervisor Ben Tassel, Mayor Winward and I. Um, ma- made a decision after. Um, conversations with parks. That the three of us um as executives of the municipalities would um sign on together to a communication to parks. Um, this does not represent, what I am about to read into the record does not represent consensus on this board. But it does represent consensus among the three um executives and this was delivered to um Linda Cooper. Who is the Regional Director for Parks and Megan Fitzgerald, she's the Deputy Commissioner who replaced Matt Davidson, who has retired. Dear Linda and Megan. Thank you for talking with us on Monday via Zoom. As the executive officers of the neighboring municipalities of Phillips Town, Cold Spring and Nelsonville, we feel it is important. That we document our strongly held and shared convictions related to planning for the Fuhrer Trail. Having the actual trail enter the village of Cold Spring by any route. Would irreversibly change the landscape, view shed and character of the village, as well as the experience of all Phillips Towners who consider Cold Spring the heart of our town. The trail's necessary size, scale and construction requirements, particularly to meet the accessibility goals identified by the HHFT design team. Would be outsized for our small residential village. The Fuhrer Trail is necessary to solve visitation management issues north of the village. However, the village itself must be understood and treated differently than the northern areas. Given what we have seen to date of HHFT's planning and process, and in particular in the last few weeks related to their visitation reports. We believe that the trail in the village and particularly the waterborne route under proposal. Would become a tourist destination in and of itself and would result in an unbearable unsustainable increase in visitor volume that no number of trashcans. And toilets will offset. As village mayors and the town supervisor, we believe that simple residentially scaled pathways and sidewalks out of Cold Spring. Leading to a Fuhrer Trail entrance north of the village are far more appropriate to our historic livable community. Such pathways and sidewalks will provide safe passage for residents as well as tourists heading to the trail's entrance. Further, these pathways and sidewalks should be constructed and are upgraded and maintained. By Hudson Highlands Fuhrer Trail as a form of impact mitigation for the entire Phillips Town community. We look to New York State Parks in your role as lead agency in the secret progress process to represent the public interest. Um, and it's signed by John J. Van Tassel, Supervisor Town, Phillips Town, by me as Mayor of Village of Cold Spring and by Chris Ellis Winward as. Mayor of the Village of Nelsonville. Um. So that is where, that is where the three of us sta- stand. Um, after watching. This process play out. Um, obviously, we as a board will continue to have discussion. Um, we do, not tonight because it's already eight thirty, but um Eliza has raised some concerns about the survey mechanism. Um, to gather village. Um, resident and and merchant views. I share some of her concerns. We need to have a continued conversation about that. Um. I'm, an idea that I would put forward is that we simply hold, there's a proliferation. Um, of surveys and it's gonna, it's gonna confusing for people.
A whole lot of data that doesn't seem to make.
Yeah, and.
A whole lot of a difference.
And you know, we had talked about doing a a survey to. Um, to give people a space to speak who don't want to speak, but I would say. Another option is for people to write to us, um, to write letters and emails and and to have a public hearing rather than. Going through the process of trying to, trying to do a survey in this, in this, this um sort of mayhem of surveys. Happening right in the moment. Um.
If I can, if I can add, um, I, you did disclaim that this was not the view of the board.
Correct.
Um, but as a courtesy, I would have appreciated knowing that this, we were writing this letter and had already sent it. And would have appreciated having a copy before this meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Um, you, it is in your right to act unilaterally. Um, it's also in our rights to act unilaterally, but as a courtesy, we're often reminded that it's best if we work together as a board.
Yeah. So this was just for your information, this was just sent today. And. I accept your, I accept your, your feedback. Um, so at some point, we need to calendarize, we need to calendarize a public discussion. If no one has anything else, I will make a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.